This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular October 7th, 24 council meeting to order at 6:33 PM. All right, and pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Proud of them, that's good. Any additions or corrections to your agenda other than the citizens of the month going ahead of the presentation? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda with that one little switch. And Mr. Sack.
Ms. Sack.
Thank you, Councilor Ash.
Councilor Webb.
Aye.
Councilor Ash.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Councilor Wagner.
Aye.
Councilor Harmon.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we'll move right into the citizens of the month. I'll turn it over to Councilor Wagner. Your recognition of type of primary school business.
So, in, in fair, in the fairness of full disclosure, I'm also on the school board. I'm also the school board chair. So, I felt a little awkward, but there is a group of people in our community that is absolutely core to our community. That have, that come here at least nine months a year, often more, who contribute so much to our community and do not get very much, and they do not get, if, I shouldn't say that, they often don't get the recognition or acknowledgement of how integral they are to our community, how important they are to our community. And I wanted to make sure that they knew that, and that our citizens knew that, by awarding them for my choice this, in September, as citizens of the month, not just one. I'd like to recognize who's here, and I am embarrassed to say I had to clarify a couple names, because I'm a city councilman. So, Jim Harmon is our superintendent. We've got Shelby Wilson, who is our, our elementary principals, elementary's principal. I don't know which way it goes. Nate Underwood, who was my child's principal, who is coming through. He is the high school and middle school principal. Brett Ossley, former city councilman and school board member, and he is a teacher now, and I wish my kids had had him as a teacher. He's also resident, or close to, you're in city limits.
Yes, I am.
Suzanne Myers, who is our absolutely brilliant, what is the actual title? But, yeah, special.
Special means.
And special means.
Especially director.
Especially director. And also, who is amazing also, and they're all, and they all come to all of our, all of our meetings. They are so involved, making sure our kids get what they need, and helping those kids become better citizens for Burnout. I'd also like to recognize, we have a school staff member here also, Mrs. Ash, who.
Oh, Mrs. Chris is here.
Oh, and who are also very, I mean. So, thank you all for all you do for our community, and it is my honor to recognize Burnout School District and all of the people, and please pass this on to everybody at the district, um, citizens of the month.
Order. Oh, sure.
I'm not gonna do this by myself.
Crystal. Come on.
Take everybody.
Switch. Okay. Some more of this.
Yeah, somebody block us, will ya? We don't have the smile.
Okay, everybody ready? One, two, three, do one more, one more.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You guys don't want to stay with me, do you?
You can.
You're welcome.
Just kidding.
Do not feel obligated to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, go.
You don't say, and you're picking me up, see you tomorrow. No, you're welcome.
Don't worry about those chairs.
Thank you for staying.
Hey, Nate? You wanna take this?
No, that's yours.
Like he said, I might be there tomorrow.
Where you going?
It's right in the bar.
It's supposed to be the representative. All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move right into our presentation tonight. Commissioner. On the county commissioner, he's gonna talk about the Clumby County Jail. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, and thanks for getting me in quickly. I would love to stay all evening. I have any excuse to hint, I live up here, but I do have family matters, so after this, I'll probably scramble out of here myself. So, I'm here to talk about the jail levy, which we put on the ballot in the primary in May, and were not successful. I think a big part of that was maybe a circumstantial communication on what it is. It is essentially a renewal of our existing levy that we've had since 2014. It is not to ask for anything new, other than we have higher costs now because of food, medical, and staffing increases, specifically over the past four years. So, our current operating levy expires June 30th, 2025, which is, you know, six months or so from now. And that 58 cents per thousand that we've been paying since 2014 would go to zero if this levy does not pass. The new levy rate is 79 cents per thousand, 21 cents more. The reason for that increase is specifically for added costs. We're not asking for anything more than the additional costs that have happened over the last few years. We have burnt through all of our reserves over the past few years during this cycle of the operating levy that exists right now, which has prevented us from replacing a roof and doing some other critical things. But just to operate and get through our current levy, we've also increased our general fund contribution by 50% this year to get through the rest of this existing levy. If this levy does not pass, unfortunately, we'll have a rippling effect. To say a total jail closure, I don't think would be entirely honest, but a functional jail closure is absolutely something that will happen. Right now, we, for the most part, 150 to 175 beds are occupied in our Clumby County Jail. We would likely go down to maybe then up to a 10 bed kind of format, and then have to reach out to other counties to lease our rent of jail space. Just some actual stuff that may be clarification, so you guys all know. For one, marshal holds. That is one of our main financial contributors to helping us operate the jail. It is a rate that we continue to negotiate. We've just finished negotiations on a higher rate, actually making money on those holds. Yep, we did not have the federal marshal holds. We would also not be able to operate the jail if we did not have our current general fund contribution. We would not be able to operate the jail, and if we did not have this operating levy, we would not be able to operate the jail. So, you could think of it as a three-legged stool of sorts. One goes away, there's a rippling effect that makes it nearly impossible for us to operate our jail at the capacity, where near the capacity it is now. The jail is also a facility that's directly used by each of our cities, along with county residents outside of city limits, that we have no intention and do not want to, and probably would get nowhere if we tried to charge individual cities for the space at the jail. If this jail levy went away, cities, or crimes that happened in the city with someone that would typically get sent to county jail, the cities would have to either deal with the reality of a book and release, or felony charge where they have to get housed. The county, county's ability to pay that rent space, if available, and a different jail would be severely limited, so likely would turn it to a cost burden for cities. What else do I got? The 21% increase, as I said, is simply to cover the 1.5 to 2 million dollars of increased costs that have happened over the last few years. If any one of us goes to buy groceries, we've seen those increases over the last three to four years specifically. Our, come out with two bags of groceries that don't cost a hundred bucks now, that was very different. Four years ago, we deal with the same stuff. We're not allowed to just feed peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to the inmates. There's, there's requirements. Medical services has become one of the biggest increases, a million dollar increase over the last couple of years per year, and limited medical providers that will operate state of Oregon jails, because Oregon is a tenuous state, whether we like it or not. There's very limited medical providers now to operate county jails, and that is a mandated service that we have to require, have to provide. So, what I'm here to do, and I realize the city, and I appreciate the city of Burnout, yet typically doesn't get in the business of supporting operating levies. I will say that this is different in the way that it is a critical facility that the city uses on a regular basis. The county doesn't discriminate between inmates that come from any one of the cities or anywhere throughout the county. We have 80 local residents, as we speak, in the county jail since 2014. We have not released anyone unless they may fail, or a judge orders us to. So, we've taken a certain pride in maintaining that, that critical, that law enforcement is having a fully functional jail system. Another thing that's came up is we give less to our jail than other counties, which is factually incorrect. One thing that most, any of you probably understand, is there's 36 counties, probably just like a number of cities, none of them are apples for apples when it comes to funding and how they operate. But what people don't understand is out of the $10 million that the county takes in for property tax, or a cut of property tax revenue, nearly 70 plus, 70 plus percent of those funds go to support public safety. The jail on its own is a critical part of that overall structure, and is somewhere in the 15, 16% range. Just on the jail, another over 20% goes towards our sheriff's department, another 20% goes for attorney support, 10% goes towards our juvenile corrections program, and there's some other things, if I get into code enforcement. The vast majority of our general fund dollars, that we have a discretionary authority on, those, public safety. I wish we could carve out another million or two million dollars to cover this gap. We've already done as much as we possibly could do by increasing 50% of our general fund contribution. So, this, I think, is something that if it does not pass, will have an absolute impact on each of the cities, along with the county as a whole. We will be going backwards when it comes to public safety. So, I would humbly ask for the city's support and formal support on this particular levy, to consider a city endorsement of the levy that we can add on to the rest of the cities in Clumby County that have already been supporting this levy. Any questions? I was not aware, there's not a virtual aspect here, so I was hoping to have, is there?
Yeah, because nobody's on it.
Nobody's on it, okay. Well, I was hoping to have a finance person available. I could probably answer any of those questions, and the sheriff has another, another obligation tonight, so here I am.
Casey, when I met with Gilbert Cordos, I wanted to talk about this issue. I think you said an annual operating cost of about almost 10 million.
Right, under 10 million.
And did you break it down into categories, like the general fund, and what goes in to make that 10 million?
Sure. And get close. The 1.5 million of that, just under 1.4 some odd dollars and change, but just under 1.5 comes from the county general fund, for the jail specifically. This current levy that we have is, I want to say, three to, or pushing 4 million dollars. And then our federal marshal holds are the remainder of getting to that 10. And I think that gets us eight or nine. We are short 1.5 to 2 million. So, county general funds 15%. The levy is somewhere in the 30 to 40% range, and the marshal holds are close to 50%.
I used to serve on the jail board for a couple of years. When did, when was the reserve fund exhausted? Just this year?
Last year.
Last year.
Essentially, to get through the rest of this year, that's when we increased 50%, and we're committed to maintaining that level. The legal obligation, as it stands, is a million for us to have. We originally asked for 87 cents last May. We sharpened our pencils, said, you know what, we're gonna have to continue this additional $500,000 obligation from the general fund to make 79 cents work.
So, if this passes in November, will that contract continue on through the end of 28, 2028?
It's a four-year.
Four years.
And if we can't do an incremental increase per year, you have to forecast, which we did last go around. And of course, the last few years have been pretty tough to forecast, which, which has gotten us into the place we have now. Ideally, you don't grant the reserves to get to a point where we're like, or in the position we are now. Reserves are really designed to maybe get you through six months. So, no matter what, you have to forecast out three to five years, depending on what you ask for, for the levy jurisdiction. And you can't do a cost adjustment with the levy, unfortunately. Legally, you're not allowed. Any specific questions from anyone else? Do you have any answer?
Basically be a book and release.
That will unfortunately become the model. I can't give you an exact timeframe, but within a year, that's. So, some fairly severe changes to how we operate our jail, and in a weird way, it ended up costing the county even more than the general fund impact, because without those other funding mechanisms, we'll lose our marshal contract. Obviously, the levy's not there, so when we're down to a general fund, it's tricky to determine the cost moving forward for rent, bed space that we'd have to rent. So, if you just step back from a business perspective, any business that all of a sudden loses 15, 20% of its revenues isn't just a simple adjustment, figure out how to survive it, it does have a snowball-type impact.
So, are you pushing this for how many years?
Four years, as it says here, yes. Four years, same operation as we've had since 2014, levy for you. For the average taxpayer, you're somewhere in the $5 to $10 a month cost of an actual increase. The total, if you would say, what does 79 cents cost? And it's 250 bucks a year, I believe, somewhere right in there, for the average taxpayer. But the average taxpayer's already paying 70% of that now, so it's really only a, you know, $5 to $10 a year, depending on how valuable the house you have, changed.
Steve.
Good question. Why didn't, approximately a year ago, did the sheriff go out for patrol levy, knowing that this boondoggle was gonna come in with the jail? Why, why that particular amount of duty?
We had an increased concern, and I think rightfully so, with public safety and law enforcement. We haven't had for 30 years or more, the ability to have deputies on call for 24/7 service. Those are completely isolated separate funds. No jail funds goes towards deputies that are patrolling the street. You essentially can consider them two separate programs. The sheriff very much wanted to get to a 24/7 coverage model. That's not something that could happen with the jail. And his appeal to the public, which I think the public ultimately voted in favor, was at some point, he would like to try to convince the public to combine those levies into one thing, because they're both necessary, but he wanted to prove out the concept with an enhanced law enforcement levy. That particular levy will have to act on its own until it's proposed differently. So, they just very much are two separate funds, not a penny of the jail funds can be spent on patrol deputies or anything that's not directly associated with the jail.
Well, I would just say this, as a longtime resident in this community, I've been around you a long time. Most of these people know some of the capacity I've served at. But I guess my concern is, as a citizen over here, we had been promised in past times, many times, from the sheriff's office, lots of response and increased patrol of our area. And I had a taxpayer who apprehended about seeing my city government support this cause when I know even present time, we need a sheriff officer over here, unless it's a shooting, or it's a civil service duty, serving papers, to see an active patrol deputy down the street.
So, the enhanced law enforcement, the levy was never designed to make sure that there was an extra, extra deputy in every city. I wish that could be the case, that they would have had to ask for quite a lot more. So, that provides, I believe it's two deputies at all times, somewhere in the county 24/7. So, rather than getting a deputy out of bed, if there's an emergency, there's someone actually in a car. You know, I, I'm probably the last one as a citizen to vote yes on levies and bonds. I think we all, we live in Clumby County, because it's a hell of a lot cheaper than the neighboring counties around us. But like I said, public safety and justice has gotten to eating up well over 70% of the county's property tax income. I wish there was another solution, but, and the jail, I will say is different, because it is a facility that every city, every time somebody gets arrested in Burnout yet, that needs to go to jail. That's the facility that they go to.
Just one of the last things, I know that the city, a couple of years, it's been a few years ago, entered into a contract agreement with the county.
Got it.
To get a deputy over here for 10 hours a week, and so on and so forth. That time, if I remember correctly, the sheriff was actually charged for this one hour drive time, just took over my service. And as we all, if I remember well, that did not work out very well for the city at all.
I know that.
And so, that's it's evident, just letting you know, I'm really apprehensive about signing on my own, one way or another. Because I like you, it's costing me my fans much more than it is by yours.
Sure. Well, a couple things. This particular one is to fight up to 10 more dollars a month. Second thing, you know, I think there's all sorts of ways to evaluate the city's and the county's agreement on how to try to partner and work law enforcement out together. I personally wish that we could have worked on that some more, found the right model. I think these services are gonna get more and more expensive for every city and the county as a whole. We're a poor county with a bunch of poor cities, the more we work together, and it's a good thing. Now, the city of Klaskanai, they've chosen to stick with a fully funded, or full contract basis with the sheriff's department, and they consistently decided to stick with that contract for cost reasons. Well, whether it's perfect or not, it is better than what the city has decided that they can afford. I'm not saying that's the model for every city, but sometimes you try something out, it doesn't work quite as well as you'd like it to. So, like, there's, you know, that didn't work out. I wish it did, it didn't. I would say this is an important thing to look at separately, because the jail is the same jail that all the cities use. It's not about necessarily patrol in your city, it's about your local law enforcement professionals. I'm sure folks get arrested in the city of Burnout yet, and some of those folks, you would sure hope that they have the consequence of jail as part of, part of that consequence.
I guess the last thing I would say is, to answer my one question, where the sheriff himself was not, why he wasn't here actually presenting this case to the city government here, and us as citizens of the community. But I will say this, and I'm not trying to be facetious with that, but come our jam read time, it was amazing how many patrol cars we saw on the street as well, with the sheriff himself, very willing to throw candy and entice us. Yeah. Come down to react.
I think all of us, we'll have to throw candy at counties. You know, I'll say, I'll say, I'll go comfortable enough saying this. I do believe I asked the sheriff to come with me, out of their obligations. I said, okay. And I said, if there's anybody virtually that can comment, if there's a specific question that I, that I can't answer, that could be helpful. I gave it out a little bit late notice. But I'd say there, there's some tensions that happened, because the city and the county arrangement for that law enforcement thing didn't work all that well. So, it can be hard, and not easy for me, but I'm dumb enough to come in and do it, and I care enough to come in and do it, to come and ask somebody that has a history of not supporting levies, this particular one, I will say is very much city function, it's just as much as it is county function.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. So, Steve kind of hit on a lot of what I was thinking. And you mentioned that we were not in that previous levy, promised a patrol officer for every city, but we were told that it would reinstate our patrol officer for the Hamlin Valley.
That was the goal. Now, I know they haven't hired every officer, they have gotten up to what is functionally. As you know, it takes time to get officers, so the seven patrol deputies that are funded by that levy, plus cars and equipment, I believe we're at three or four now. So, the time it takes to get an officer fully through the system, credentialed, and ready to actually be on the streets can take a year or more. It's, it's, so that, I would say, is very part of the equation. So, those officers now are on duty somewhere in the county, whether they're at the capacity to have a dedicated one in the Hamlin Valley. I can't answer that question, but I know they're not fully staffed with those dollars yet, and those dollars don't go away. So, they are dedicated, and eventually, the seven deputies will be available countywide.
Hold on. Sorry, that sidetracked me. So, that levy was also a situation where Sheriff Pixley did not choose to come and present to us himself. And I, I think again, at the end of the day, which is kind of where we went last time, is that regardless of how we feel as citizen voters, the question to me is, is it in the scope of a city council to tell our constituents how to vote? In my opinion, it's no.
Well, and I'd be of the position, if, if I could tell my county constituents how to vote, then that, that wouldn't be a very good way to think. If I could tell them, in my position and as a board, I support ways to vote, then I would do that. And each of our other cities, I think historically, haven't taken stances on these sorts of things, but have each chosen to take a stance to support because of that direct connection, especially with the city functions.
Go ahead, Tony.
Record Tom, I agree to H Street for New York. Just want to say a couple of things to point out what Casey said about hiring. In 2014, we were right at the very edge, close to the jail, before the first levy passed. And because we got so close, we lost 13 deputies. They all left, because they could see the handwriting on the wall. It took almost three years to rehire 13 deputies. It's very difficult to hire a deputy, as I'm sure the chief knows. It's, it's not easy to hire a law enforcement person, because they have to pass a psych test, among other things. And I'd say 60% will fail outright for themselves, and bang on it. But anyway, you point out that it is very difficult to rehire, when you lose a deputy or a lawyer, as you well know, have that experience yourself. Secondly, I think it's important and unfortunate that Casey appeared defending the sheriff, who was probably the world's second to me, the world's worst campaigner. And I now would say, I openly, it's terrible. But this is a, this isn't for sheriff's call. This is the jail, and the county commissioners are responsible on that jail. And that's why they're making that play. As president of the economic team, it's not a Clumby County function, private business. As president of the Clumby County Economic Team, we stay out of politics. We don't get involved, it's like you guys don't get involved in letters. This was important enough for us, for new businesses coming in, and existing businesses that exist already in this county, that we decided it was an economic issue. So, the Clumby Economic Team, it was a whole part of the, supported this levy as well. The last thing I'll say is, I know that Casey reiterated enough to say that, you know, out of, I don't know what the budget is this year, but somewhere around 60 to 100 million dollars. I don't know what the budget is this year, but somewhere around 60 or 100 million dollars. There's 10 in that in this discretionary. The rest of it comes from states that have to implement services that they mandated to cities and counties. So the county gets somewhere around 17% of that dollar incentive. They don't, just because the county sends you the tax check, which they're also mandated to do, doesn't mean they get to keep it. They keep 17 cents under the dollar that you get. They expand that and it's just slammed out.
It's not worth that.
Those percentages, I think that's closer to, if you add other operating levies that the county has, our discretionary is actually a little closer to, I think 12%, it's under 10 million out of all of the taxes collected. And like I said, over 70% goes to support public safety. So in that realm, there is, there is an additional fund to close this gap.
Can I ask one last question, just for clarification?
I'm not running the media, and I'd be happy to answer as many as you want.
Just clarification. Isn't there presently an 89 cent tax on this per $1,000 value for patrol and moving county for the sheriff's office?
No, 29 cents.
29 cents, okay.
And that will have to stand on its own. So jail, can't go into jail, can't go into regular sheriff administrative, but specifically for seven patrol deputies, and I believe we're at three or four now that went through the process and are being paid for by that levy, three more, three to four more to come.
Anybody else have any questions from the council?
Dale, do you want to go first?
Well, I don't have a question. I actually, Casey called me earlier this afternoon, we discussed. For myself, it's really not a question of whether we need a jail or not, or we need a jail. We've got full, finally got our full police force here in town, and then not to have somewhere to take prisoners, I mean, that's cutting your nose off, spite your face, as far as I'm concerned. But for this council, it's the decision of whether we enter in, we've never entered into the political arena of advising our constituents' wishes to vote. But I do hear the argument of this, this is, this basically an extension to our police department. I mean, without a jail, what's the point? I mean, and the catch and release doesn't work. We've seen good examples of that here in the last four years. So I think that's the crux for us is.
With all due respect, this is a represented former government that we have. You folks are hired by election to represent us. So it is absolutely germane that you represent us in this issue.
And while it's at the top of my mind, the sheriff is in charge of maintaining, not bringing the jail on, of course, when everything a sheriff does, he does not control the budget. So in that way, I understand, and I'll chew this, you know what, later saying, boy, it would have really helped if you were here. But this is out of his control on funding that gets allocated to the jails. So in that way, as the board of commissioners, we're the ones that control the purse streams at which we had more control, but I'd say it's very relevant for me to be here.
That it, Dale?
Yeah.
So I have a lot of problems with this. For one thing, I'd like to know why, if you're potentially losing 40% of your budget, why you're looking at a basically 92% reduction in beds? Because what you're saying is it's going to go from 150 to 175, down to 10. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, that there are certain things that you can't do, but if 50% is your marshal holds and 15% is from your county general fund, that the 44 million, approximately 4 million dollars, is 40%. And that, to me, is not math that adds up.
Well, for one, I said that if I had a finance person to give you the exact number, so. Approximately 10 million, that the current funding is 15 or 1.5 of general fund. The remainder is made up between marshal holds and the levy. I believe the marshal holds is a higher number than the levy. If you operate any business that has employees, like solid expenses to operate a business, and you go from one day having, well, $10 or 10 million, to the next day having eight and a half, or sorry, much more than that, 30 to 40% decrease in your funding, and expect that you can rearrange some things and still stay afloat, that's the argument I'm making. It's that to be able to just downsize is not a reality with 60-some thousand square foot facility that has a lot of moving parts and pieces. Losing 10 or 15% of the funding is enough to make that model crumble. And I would challenge any manufacturer, contractor, or whatever kind of business to deal with those sorts of revenue repercussions that has that complicated of a business. It's.
With due respect, I do work in one of those organizations, and we face that all the time, and there are accommodations made. Next point that I'd like to make. We, you're correct, Tony, we do represent our citizens, and we have an extremely high percentage of seniors and low-income people in this community, many of whom are already facing foreclosure from the county on their taxes for their properties because they can't make their annual payments for that because our taxes are already extraordinarily high. We are now going to be putting, as you said, oh, it's only between $5 and $10 a month. $5 and $10 a month for many of our citizens is the difference between them giving up and saying, I'm done, and I'm not going to pay this, I can't pay this. They don't know whether to pay for food, they don't know whether to pay for medication, they can't make their mortgage payments, they can't make their tax payments. How do we, as responsible elected officials, say, oh, it's only $5 or $10 a month more? I don't think we can. And it's, I don't, I think it's incumbent upon us, as Sri said, I don't think it's our business to be telling them how to vote or making statements as a council to put them in a position where they are going to be facing losing their home to the county for their taxes.
Does the city of Nohia lobby through the League of Organizes?
I believe.
For what?
Who are.
For any number of things, legislation that happens every year.
Yeah.
Say you're doing a very similar process there, you're lobbying for city interests, and this is something that is of interest to the city, is the statement I make. I don't know if you agree, Josette, but.
Well, I think there's a difference because they're going to make half the community feel like they're on the same page and half not. We didn't do it for our school bond, we didn't do it for the fire levies of our own fire department. It clearly is only concerned with this community and its safety. So the citizenry is pretty much a 50-50 split. So in going against it or for something, they're going to be telling half the town, we don't agree with you, you should make this choice in your voting. Or we agree with you, and this is why you should make this choice in your voting. They've never done it before. One of my questions is, if this model is so tenuous, why are we asking the citizens to pay more money? Why are we not figuring out that the model just doesn't work and pulling back from pods or doing something different? It seems like you're going to be here four years from now, and it's going to be another levy. We're going to, the patrolmen need to come to the Nahalem Valley because after the seven, what if we still don't get someone patrolling out here? You're going to be coming back for money. At some point, we have to live within our means, and we are a poor county of 59,000 residents. Our means are not growing, but our budgets seem to be. Like, that's problematic, I think, as a city, to be telling our citizens, yep, pay 10 more dollars, and in four years, they're going to ask you for 10 more dollars on top of that and on that, because the model is never changing. From 2014, we should have had a picture of like, what are we doing wrong in the jail and figuring it out, not just asking for more and more money, right?
Well, I wish I could. Because I was one who built that jail. We built that jail from a 12-bed jail to a 159-bed jail.
Okay.
We did that because we knew that if we just built for what we needed every time, the cost of construction would be too. We built for your jail. We also used the model, and I am all over the state of Oregon looking at different models. We use the model that says we're going to rent beds until we need those beds on itself. And also, why does the city of Portland export inmates to Columbia County? And this is actually the federal, because these are federal, in Columbia County. And then have to come all the way out of Columbia County and get them, and take them all the way back to Portland, stand in front of the magistrate, and they go all the way back to Columbia County. They do that because Columbia County Jail is so much less expensive per day for rental than Monona County, who can't even open a $500 million jail now that they built and are open. So the model was offset costs. You can't go from 19 or 12 beds to 159 beds, same exact cost. So I submit to you, this model does work. And in 2014, we didn't put a levy, operating levy on purpose when we made the issue of jail. By the way, the jail won't cost $10 million. It's on time and under budget. And we did not put an operating levy, although we said we would have to because of the increase in the capacity of the jail. We didn't do it until we found out how much we get offset by renting beds. And we stayed very competitive on that, competitive enough that Columbia County was able to hook those rounds right out of, from underneath the nose of Portland. So I submit to you that the model does work, and we've always said there's going to be an operating levy, and we'll be back in four years and four years and four years, it's never going to go away.
It's never intended like a bond to be a one-time set, that's just, that's not the design of an operating levy.
Go ahead, Susan.
So knowing that the levy failed the first time, six, in May, and I'm looking at this twofold. One, I think that 21 cents is a huge amount. So for a $500,000 house, it's going to increase it for.
That's assessed value, not market value.
I understand. $105, and the assessments have continued to go up, unreasonably so, just so you know. It's another $105 a year. Knowing that it failed and knowing that you've got the lowest rate apparently of rental beds in the area, to the point where it's cheaper for them to keep transporting, why was it considered to keep the levy at the 58 cents and just renew it and increase the bed rental slightly to continue to offset?
They did increase from 90 to 120 some dollars a day.
Yeah, 130 some dollars.
Yeah.
Now.
It was increased.
That has recently been renegotiated, is a part of this problem. And respectfully to Commissioner Hyatt, he has a wealth of the historic knowledge on how it was built and the whole concepts, that originally, if there was a reality, a understanding that an operating levy would be part of the equation, just like most jails throughout the state of Oregon. But in the past several years, we have made adjustments that maybe weren't conceived 25 years ago, and I hope any of us could have looked out 25 years to understand what things are going to cost now.
And I appreciate that. If I could ask, Tony?
Can you restate what that increased dollar amount was? I missed part of it.
For marshal holds?
Yeah, the bed rentals, whatever that is.
It's like 94, $95, and they increased it up to 128 at least.
I thought it was 137 was where we finally got, but I would have to bear.
It was a pretty good increase on it.
50% or so. And a 50% general fund increase would be another part of the overall funding equation.
And just a quick question, follow-up. Does the 159 include the transitional buildings?
159 what?
Vents.
I think, you know, I think it's essentially, I believe it's more than 159 beds, but we're at 250 beds, I believe, so.
250.
Transitional housing is part of our community corrections program, that's a separate funding.
155, to be exact.
255?
Yes.
Yes, 255, I thought 250. So we occupy 60-some percent of the jail on a regular basis now. Again, there's several reasons. One, we don't incarcerate as many people for things that I think some of us think we should and some of us don't. But the AD locals, on average, that are in there every month is a consistent number. And then about double that, if you do the marshal holds, which is a revenue generating source for us.
Josette?
I have a question. So you're not, what is the vacant bed amount, and could you not increase the amount of marshal holds?
That would be nice, but there are other variables that we would take all of the marshal holds if we could fill up.
That just ebbs and flows?
Yes, so there's other federal funding variables and other things that we can't just say, fill up the rest, otherwise we would hold on. So that's, that's something that is what it is. So our job is to make sure we're negotiating the most competitive rate to keep that contract. And to your points earlier, Josette, the model, I mean, I think Oregon's tax model has all sorts of issues. To Counselor Wagner's point, assessed value does not, it only goes up 3% a year per state law, so that's what you're taxed on. That is, unless you make improvements that are new improvements above $18,000 per year. And if you did that, that only adds to your base assessed value that's at 1997 rates and has went up 3% a year. If any one of us go through, unfortunately, go through our operating budgets as houses or anything else since 1997 and just did a 3% escalator per year, you're not going to cover your expenses. That's just a harsh reality. We live in, we don't have a sales tax, some of us are proud of it, some of us aren't, but our property tax system is, I would say is broken, but that's not something the county or the city can change. And we are stuck with bonds and levies as the only mechanism to cover increased costs that happen out of our control. Yes, of course, that needs to be managed well. We have a jail operating citizens advisory committee that's been in place the entire time. They've actually written a statement verifying on their end that every penny of the operating levy dollars has went, been spent appropriately 100% to jail operations. So it's something we take very seriously, and whether it's missed out on 1.5 million out of a $10 million budget, or three to four million go away with an operating levy, or 1.5 million go away and we're not able to sustain our marshal obligations, any one of those lakes fall, it does have catastrophic impacts to the jail. And that's, you know, we can sit down and go over this for hours. You'll have to trust me on that, but I'm here, I would not come here and just exaggerate
Well, I'm going to speak as an elected.
Mayor Rick, can I, can I say something?
Sure.
So I'm listening to this spiel, I'm totally for public safety in the jails. When COVID started, we lost public transportation here. You guys ended CC rider. We have all sorts of elderly people come into City Hall, other people who are transient, just trying to get through, and we don't have public transportation here. And we pay taxes for that. Council, even, what was it, out of the general fund, none of the other cities would pay, and we were doing what, $3,000, $5,000 to keep it? And it's, this has nothing to do with public safety. It's just hard to hear a spiel for more money, and you can't even get a bus two days a week so the old ladies can get to St. Helen's to do business.
I can, we want to talk transit.
I don't want to talk transit, I'm just making a point. I'm just making a point.
Well, your point, and thank you for making that point, but public transit is not something that's ever been designed in Columbia County to be paid for by property tax dollars that comes from payroll tax that ODOT, or sorry, TriMet, reaches the benefits of Columbia County residents because 70% of our residents leave the county. Those transit dollars largely stay in our neighboring counties, and that's because of our legislature, legislators decided that those dollars, following our quinn. Yet we do have dialer and a van pool service that we just started. Again, that's us using those state dollars the best we can. Those are not local dollars and never was designed to be a local dollar supportive thing. Our county is 50,000 people, over 600 some square miles. To operate a transit system on local public dollars would require an operating levy if we wanted to have anything close to that.
And the city, the city put it in the budget years ago to, and just even one, even one trip, even one trip, like, and like I said, it's not about the public safety thing, it's just, you come and say, well, we want more money for the jail, but we can't even, while City Hall employees are dealing with people who can't even get a, you know, public reliable transportation to get to St. Helens to do business or buy cheaper groceries or stuff, it's just a, it's just a hard sell for, for, for the public when there's these other little issues that could be.
So who that burden should be on? So, I mean, in that same logic, why doesn't the city just fund the transit system?
They try to.
I think some of these concerns go right back to the city. I'm sure you guys would like to provide lots more service to your city residents with city tax dollars, but there's limitations to those dollars, and that's a reality I think we could all relate to.
Well, I would just say, in Claxton County and Tilton County, they have pretty robust bus service. They also have transit district, and they tax. They have a levy that goes out every four years. That's how they provide buses. Columbia County, the bus service was provided by the seniors. And they were taking illegally, they were taking money that they were supposed to be spending on food and funding the buses, and they were going casino and all kinds of stuff. They were sold in such dire straits that the county took it over and tried to make something out of a mess. And we never used general fund dollars, it was all outside money, supposed to be coming out of the transit, like Casey said, comes out of your state tax.
And other counties.
It was so, so, I said, sort of like, the transportation money for fixing roads comes off the gas. Well, we are commuting county, 73%, commute. People buy their gas out there, they don't buy it here. So the amount of money that we get for roads in Columbia County is based on gas sales and PUC sales. And by the way, most of the trucks you see are either paying their PUCs in Longview, Kelso, or Washington County, not like the Mr. Waller here who pays them locally. But I did that research, that's why I know that. So from the very onset, and I was part of that, taking over the bus system. We were fighting for every nickel we could get. And we had buses, quite frankly, going through the council, three people in. And if it's based on ridership paying, you just don't, that's just not a model that works. So I take my hat off to the commissioners that just keep trying to make that dough up. It's not easy.
Josette.
I think the fervor in Ben's voice is, being a resident of Vernonia for 20 years, I feel like I pay a lot of taxes, the county and the county services that I access or can access in this community, really low. Doesn't feel like, feels like the Highway 30 corridor, we know this, we know it with everything, with flood response, we know we're out here in the boonies. And that whatever is happening, if St. Helens is getting hit, we know we're kind of on our own, right? We, for a lot of things.
Because if you look at the floods and the counties participating.
Can I finish what I was going to say, please? So what I'm saying is, I think this community feels underserved by the county on multiple fronts. And for you guys to keep asking for money and trying to make our council sign a levy support letter, which they've never done in the history of this city, feels like a ton of pressure that doesn't come with the benefits we think we pay for in our taxes.
Well, I'm choosing to come here on my own, so this is not coming from the board of commissioners. I provide information to explain why this is important. Of course, as a city council, you have the autonomy to make your decision. I will just reiterate, the other cities throughout the county, that I would argue all could try to say whether they would like more or less county support. It does surprise me as a city and understanding how difficult this public business is, that I'm being told the county is not managing its money correctly. I take a little offense to that, but I'm okay with that because I set myself up for it, that's fine. I and many others work tirelessly to the best, to do the best we can with a very complicated system. And I think we do quite well at that, and there's always room for improvement. I think many of our challenges come through the state and the feds on the services counties are required to provide. I don't agree with a lot of them, but that is part of the job. So with this, and I do appreciate everybody's input, and won't take personal offense, it's more of asking for your support. And I think we do need to find ways to work together and continuously try to improve how we work together. If we always are just stuck on, the county's never done enough for us, then I think that will be harder for us to move forward. But my objective will be to continue to try to make this relationship better. And I would consider myself closer to a guy from this area than a guy from any of the other areas. I grew up on Vernonia Highway, and maybe that's why I get to come here and plead for these things, and I'll continue to do it and hopefully build this relationship to make it even better and more functional and create better partnerships.
Casey, I sure appreciate you coming tonight and maybe answering some questions that we had, and that was my intent in inviting you. My personal take on this is that I'm an elected official, have been for almost six years now. Are, one of my main objectives, and I think it's the, the objective of the council and the city, is to provide the city of Vernonia with safe drinking water, sewage, and police protection, keep our community safe. We terminated a contract with the sheriff's office last year or two years ago, and you know, it's like Tony said, it's, it's been a challenge to, to hire new officers, and but we finally have four full-time policemen this year, and we're, we're doing good. I'm totally in favor of it. I mean, I want the citizens of Vernonia know that I'm in favor of keeping our jail open and trying to keep them safe and letting our police officers do their job. And it makes, I think it makes their job easier, rather than just a book and release and you still got the same problems. I think it's a step backwards. I hate property tax, I pay a bunch of them, but I, I don't have an issue with paying a little bit more to keep our community safe. So I'm in favor of it.
I have what might be a naive question. And you indicated that if it's a felony, go to somewhere else. So are you saying that every person who's arrested is going to be a catch and release or a arrest and release?
I would say the overall model of the jail. I'm going to do a book and release model. If there's a felony arrest made, I'm not going to be the one to tell you what levels bail works with felony issues, but with a felony arrest that we are required to hold in jail, if we do not have the capacity in our local jail, we would be forced to rent a bed in another jail. And that is a quandary that we haven't entirely figured out because, for one, extra jail beds, there's not a ton of those in our area. You also have to pay to transport. So that alone could turn into pretty significant general fund repercussions, and I can't even wrap my head around how we take care of those repercussions.
Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, but we're not the only county having difficulty. I think Tullamook County's really having a hard time.
I'd say it's fair to say most rural counties struggle to maintain jail operations, and I don't have the number off, but many, many counties that have jails rely on operating levies. It is not an abnormal thing whatsoever.
I'm still trying to maybe hone in on, what is the actual number that we're looking at? I mean, maybe you can't get that for us tonight. Maybe you need to get back with us with an email to Josette or Stephanie so they can be presented. I'd really like to see a breakdown of the cost of having to book and potentially transport and rent a bed somewhere else versus the cost of actually putting them in our own jail in Columbia County if this does come to fruition, not getting funded.
Well.
And then one last question is, would the county go after the levy again in May, which is prior to your expiration of the new, of the existing levy, back to the original 58 cents?
And then you wind up with 13 last deputies.
Okay. I mean, that was essentially the point I was going to make, is we already are struggling to keep those deputies, which we have, Sheriff Fixley has done one hell of a job recruiting a good solid force and having deputies in the jail. Those deputies are already nervous and are already looking for other jobs and are already interviewing, anticipating what happens. Will they wait around till that last day? Probably not. That wouldn't be a very good financial decision for them. We already have to compete with counties that pay more money for law enforcement. And it turns out, the average law enforcement person drives quite a bit, so they don't necessarily mind a community. I'm a believer that I'd rather keep those jobs locally for one. Just a simple step back and look at the efficiencies of transporting inmates to outside areas is very inefficient. A simple number, if you do some math, I guess, 137 times 80 per month without transport fees, transporting costs. That might start to wrap your head around potential costs, but those bed rates would have to be negotiated. Would we be able to house 80 inmates? Likely not. It would probably get down to the worst 10, 20. But the misdemeanor offenses that we typically house in the jail would very much be a book and release and not transported somewhere else.
How many of those 80 are consistent? I mean, same people, month after month? So they're housed there rather than, it's not 80 that we're going to be?
I think there's a lot of repeat offenders.
I, I get that. I'm just trying to, I would love to see some actual numbers of this breakdown of what it, how many really are longer term, so it's not really having to find 80 beds, it's one person, however many, however many months they are in.
The 80 is consistent, so that will go.
I understand that, but they're not necessarily new inmates.
You can look at it compared to any other county.
But that those 80 beds are required unless you decide to not open accountable and keep them in jail. So they, there's recidivism. So those offenders, if you have common offenders that continue to offend, they would continue to need to go to jail, or you would likely not make the expense of renting a bed if you couldn't afford it, and those offenders would spend less time in jail. So, you know, those exact breakdowns that some of these things take time to try to break down any specific question, and so, yeah, I can't give you exact numbers on, on that at the moment, but I think the general concept shouldn't be too hard to step back and understand that 80 beds is 80 beds.
Tom. So if you gave us a number of the marshal ones that you hold?
Yeah.
What a cost per day? What about the county ones? What do you figure they run a day?
You know, that depends on the total population, so it's a moving target. If we only have 50 marshal holds, then the locals cost more. If we have 90 marshal holds, locals cost less.
But still, there's got to be a pretty close number, what you figure.
So we could do it like this, 160 average inmates a month divided by 10 million, if you want to break it down, but that's, obviously, there's lots of variables there that it's not that simple. So the fluctuation changes the cost of inmate and marshal. With that rate, have been determined, we're making money. Now, counties, local governments are designed to make money. It's turned into the overall, it takes 10 million bucks to adequately operate the jail. So a dollar, $137 a night for somewhere around 80 marshals, marshal holds, that's a revenue equation that contributes to that $10 million figure to operate a 60% fully capacity jail.
Dale.
So we have a county commissioner in front of us presenting a proposal. I don't think it's really our job to reconstruct the budget of the jail for in here tonight. They're telling us repercussions if we don't pass this. I think the question's before us, are we in favor of supporting this? Second question is, is this council supportive of breaking our precedent of endorsing a proposal? So there's two basic questions for us. I think we could be here a week.
Absolutely. That would require us sitting down in front of some books. That could be more precise.
And I don't think it's our job.
I think your second question is, do we break precedent? And I, I would highly recommend against that.
And if there's discussion, that I could just throw one more thing. I hear it all the time, and I think we all have. We've always done it this way. So that's the way we need to do it. I think this is an example that breaking precedent makes more sense. And I'll just close with that, and I'll respect your guys' position either way, but I would appreciate one if you agree.
I have one last comment I'd like to follow in there. Just follow in on Susan and Ben's comment, reference to the dollars and cents. My wife and I have lived here, I've lived here my entire life, and we've reached the age of retirement, and I have to tell you truthfully, the city council and the county government, we've reached a point where the cost of living for us in this community versus where we may potentially go is significantly different to the tune of about with services, water, sewer, law enforcement, fire service, county road, whatever, county sheriff, to the tune of about $7,000 a year cheaper than the sheet scale. And we've done the factory, we've done that. And so when you say that $5 to $10, my wife and I are looking at that and saying, you know, if we can save $6,000 a little over there, why would we want to stay here when it costs us so much more? So as to you, the city government, that's what I'm saying as a citizen, at what point will you reach a plateau and say, okay, we don't want to implement any more costs on our citizens? I was a businessman for 45 years, and I've had to go back and trim my costs of doing business to make it work many times over the years. So my recommendation is, as a county government and even to the city, what can you do to maintain where you are, but also trim the fat just a little bit, even though it's leaning, trim the fat a little bit to keep things operational. No, I don't want to see us lose our jail, but I also have other people that work in law enforcement, there's a couple state troopers that are your friends of mine, and I've heard the story about how, well, we get a motor truck on the highway doing 150 miles an hour, that's no problem. And yet, the jails will not take them in because they're not a harsh rash.
That will never happen in Columbia County under its current format. We've never decided to not take anyone in.
But as a citizen.
Totally get it. Now, I would say, you're moving near Ben, so wait and see what happens over the next 10, 20 years.
It's changed a lot in the 15 years I've owned a home.
Oh, yeah.
It's still cheaper.
And in our area, we are much cheaper than other counties when it comes to tax burden.
So I.
I just want to draw one more point.
Go ahead, Tom.
This is, when I was, I had a, this town, I used to think, man, just get more homes going, like you get more services. And that's just. And that's just, that's a misnomer. Yeah. And this is a number that's true throughout the country. For every dollar that you get in taxes from a homeowner, it costs about $1.16 to $1.20 in services they require in dessert. Dollar 16 to $1.20. Every time you build a house in Burnham, city council's ability to provide services goes backwards, now forwards. It gets worse each time. Now, a business in Burnham or anywhere else costs about 51 cents for every dollar of tax they get. Every time you build a business in Columbia County, you go forwards, not backwards. We're right now in the middle of negotiating with an economic team, we're in the middle of negotiating a $2.5 billion deal with a company coming into this county. You know, because that really helps turn this around. That's the only way we're going to turn around in the cities and the county. The first thing they asked was how's our public, public safety system? And they wanted to see it. Close the jail and shut the doors. I guarantee. So it's counterintuitive. I didn't know for a long time that every time you build a house, you go backwards because you got police, fire, the school. You don't have that kind of requirement when you have business. They don't have kids going to school. They don't have all the locations. So it's 51 cents. Now, that number changes from community to community across the landscape of the country, but generally that equation is the same everywhere. And it's shocking to find out where are the tax officers come from that are giving us the capacity to provide services. It's not from the UN, it's from the business, your business. But it's not from.
Data centers and those sorts of things going in in Central Oregon does help a lot when it comes to the property tax income. So.
They have businesses. I mean, Washington County, because business is all with a stick. Words climb up on them, but everybody's commuting. When you have 73% of you, the ability to provide services is barely sufficient.
I was hoping, I'm still hoping that this council changes their mind and makes an exception here. I really want to support our law enforcement. I want to keep our communities safe. I spent a night in Columbia County Jail 36 years ago. I know what it feels like. It changed my life. I wouldn't be sitting here as mayor if I hadn't made that change and was arrested and spent that night in Columbia County Jail. It changed my life. We need to keep our citizens safe. And if we close this jail, we're taking two steps backwards. This is very important. There's a lot of crime going around in the nation and it's only going to get worse. So I hope the council reconsider's this. We don't have to tell other people how they vote. That's their prerogative. But knowing that this council supports our law enforcement and our jail and want to keep it open, I think there's nothing wrong with that.
Sounds like a motion to me.
You going to second that motion?
Oh, no. You can't make a motion. So I, I feel like what you've just said was derogatory towards our police force. What you said was keeping our communities safe. We can't do that without this jail levy. And to me, that is dismissing everything that our police force does. And I, again, I'd like to say our budget isn't going backwards. Our budget is in continuing to provide better services to our community and better police service to our community. And again, I believe it is not our role nor our job to make a recommendation on how our citizens should perceive this and should vote because that's how it's going to be seen.
Well, let's.
So I'd like to make a motion, unless you want to make a motion, a motion, anybody else, that I do not recommend that city council takes a position on the jail levy.
I'll second. Mayor Hobart?
Nay.
Councilor Wagner?
I'm voting yes, that I want it not to. Yes. Correct that I?
The motion is that council not take a position on the jail levy.
Yes.
Neutral.
Yes.
Hobart is a nay. Wagner is a aye. Norman, Councilor Norman, sorry.
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, I appreciate your, and it's time and the very good discussion.
Yeah, I do too.
I think we should continue to find ways to work together. And I will ask you to ever want to meet your personal endorsements and your capacity in your elected positions. So I can have the answer on a couple and I only have three of your phone numbers. So maybe you can give me your personal numbers if you're so daring, so.
Thank you, Casey.
And I appreciate you coming up. We'd love to see you up here more often, not just on nights like this.
I am up here on a regular basis for many things. Now, not at your council meetings, but there's no shortage of meetings in my world. So thank you guys.
Okay, moving on. Councilor Committee meeting reports. Amy?
Yeah.
Public Works, go ahead, Neil.
Brief, just a lot of informational stuff. We went over on our 24th meeting, I believe. See, we reported out on our, had a report out on the springboard project from Sheila, how that's going and we'll probably be getting updates tonight. I think Ben's working on our maps on our pedestrian improvement project plan. We reviewed the Knot Street, State Avenue project, our recommendations. I think we're working through that process. We discussed how we're going to fund our future paving program, kind of the philosophy of using our in-house money versus trying to get some extra grant monies or SCA stuff. And then another one, I think we've talked a little bit about trying to inform the public and specifically would be our public works projects, trying to maybe write little articles for the paper that, so people are more informed of what's going on. So they're kind of piloting an idea around that. So that's pretty much it.
So Parks finally met. They, I gave them some updates. They're looking forward to the senior path, this finally being available to install. Let them know about the whistle and the bell at Shea going to them, from the Shea locomotive going to the museum. They're excited about that. Excited about painting the codex. They have some requests. Are wanting to kind of get an update, which I guess is something council is waiting to hear back on as well, on the smoking signs.
Yeah.
So the, working with the county to get ones that support the ordinance. And then also we have asked for a staff report back about Ben's suggestion as well.
And I actually created, Josette, I created a city logoed sign that Josette has.
Who is the new contact there? Because the contacts switched like three times. Can you guys get me who Public Health?
Haley.
Okay. I can find her if I have a name.
Haley.
I'll go with Haley. That's good enough.
Definitely Haley.
Find her.
It'll come to me like next night, tonight, and I'll text. So that was one. And then the other one was the same thing also that we asked for, which was kind of an idea of the timeline and proposal of whether we went with going for grant for the stadium before proceeding with.
Yeah, and I'm.
For the campground.
Waiting for some of the towns that do school-based.
Yeah.
Grants.
Isn't there just Hermiston?
There was just Hermiston, but then there was two more that did like a gym, which isn't a stadium, but it's also a facility building. So I'm waiting for them to kind of, and I was just going to kind of come to Parks and present to council and Parks.
Okay.
Tell you what I've learned and then we can go speak what we've learned to the committee, see if they're still wanting to partner or council, you know, kick it down the road.
Sign a dart on the wall that we wouldn't like hunt you down for.
I'm thinking, my goal for a report?
Yeah.
I'm thinking November. Yeah. Because I have half of like what I've.
Or just that's for the stadium versus.
No, for both. Because I have half the kind of informational written in a staff report from what I have. I'm waiting on the other two because I didn't want just one example of a city that went to do a public facility.
Okay.
Yeah. So I can do them the first meeting of November and then get them to, I might be able to, is Parks meeting this month? I might be able to get a version to Parks, their meeting of October.
Okay. They do have one vacancy, so anyone's looking for things to do. It's a good committee. And then the last thing was Erica Johansson came from the Lions Club. They, sorry, my brain was off.
About the Dewey Pool?
They're putting a sign at Dewey Pool. And asked to put a sign at Dewey Pool and it would go on the existing sign infrastructure that's already there to speak to the history of Dewey because that's not really out there anywhere. The committee approved that. The Lions Club is paying for it, so there's no expense. There's a perfect spot on the border anyway where it will fit in kind of adjacent to an existing sign. And then I forwarded them the info I have on using, because they wanted to use maybe the city logo. They weren't sure. So I sent them the, like, creative guidelines and then the link to the logos. And I suggested that whoever they have, they have someone lined up that is doing it, then to send it back to you guys for approval.
And so if they do need, if they do need specific files, we actually have like design files, like ESP files. I don't know what they all are, yeah, that for graphic design. So if anybody needs.
I think.
A specific logo, we do have, we have those, so.
I think you gave them the whole branding packet that shows what, you know, the like five page.
It also had a link to, I'm sure it's not a public facing page, but it's a page on the website that has the different files like on it.
Yeah, but those are just, yeah, those are just like the JPG or PNG files.
I used them in the Illustrator file, the brochure. I think there was something there.
And those will work, those will work fine. But I was just saying, like, if they need, if they need something else, they're free to contact me and I will get any format or size resolution that they need.
All right. I'll email her back and let her know that, yeah.
And then the other sign that they're putting is on the gazebo.
Oh, that's.
It's, it's, it's a small plaque to acknowledge Jim Prripich because he did the building of that and passed this year, so they wanted to do that. The other thing I will say is that we have a new Lions President's shadow box. There's two more Lion Presidents vests in the hallway and we took down the city groundbreaking, ribbon cutting, and we're going to find a good spot for it, but it looked better with the three lions kind of all in a row, so.
Thank you, Shari. Okay, topics on the floor.
I have two. First is Steve Weller.
Do I have to stand up and?
Yes, you do.
It'll feel good. It's hot in here.
Just state your name. You don't have to state your address.
Steve Weller, Redonia. And I just have a couple of questions. One is where the city council and its administration stands on the search for a chief of police replacement or that's at. And the second thing I would like to request, and I've lived up there for 27 years, and is that is on the very end of G Street when you come onto State Avenue. I don't know if you've ever looked at that very closely, but we've got a pretty steep percentage grade coming down that street. Well, in the wintertime, that gets to be a regular skating rink. And I know because I've plowed that street many, 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 many times. But what I would like to see is the potential of some kind of a barrier so that when you come to the end of G Street, should you not be able to stop, you don't go right across State Avenue and down in that serious ravine into the city water plant and the county road department. Because if you were not able to go straight forward in your loss of control and you went sideways, your vehicle is going to roll and the chances of a serious accident, even to the point of fatality, pretty great. Because a vehicle rolls over more than one time. If you do the history and statistics on rollovers, your chances of survival drop pretty immensely. So I would just like to say on behalf of me, but our neighborly, and the people that live on G Street, a simple guard rail, it wouldn't be that expensive, I don't believe. Put some posts and some actual guard rail material or some kind of a barrier that could slow stuff down. So if you guys could do those things and look into that, it would be greatly appreciated.
So one of your neighbors beat you to it.
Oh.
She's standing at the back. The engineer's working on it. One of the problems we're coming across is how that edge shears back and getting something that's going to actually stop a car into the meat of the hill there. So he's working on that, the plan, because it's very kind of, like, if you go to the public works side, you can see it's not, it's not a slope. It kind of carves in a bit. And so we're trying to come up with something that could actually stop a car and doesn't just give them like a bump and then everything goes with them. We talked about, Amy and I talked about rocks. There's not enough right of way to put it without it being out of the right of way. So we're working on the guard rail idea. But just doing a longer bollard is what we call them. They come in different lengths and just getting more of it in the meat of the hill.
Because it doesn't have to be a long.
No, it just needs, we don't want it to just give fake safety and then it comes out of the hill. So that's.
To give this council a little history, it's been several years ago, but that sloughed out where she's talking about it and they had to come in and fix that and repair. In fact, I poured material into it, rock material, to help the process come along. So it's just an area that, it's been a concern. I've never raised my voice, but I have with now the new asphalt, with the new asphalt, which we thank you very much for, it'll leave a slip because there's not any ground.
Thanks, Steve.
Are we going to address his first question?
Oh, your first question. So we're doing an internal posting and then should that candidate not get through the panel, then we would do an external posting.
The timeline on that?
Well, our goal is by the end of the year for all the stuff, checking in and posting and all the panel and everything.
Thank you.
Second person is Amy.
And we didn't meet before this meeting. Because I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't say Amy until I was on G Street. I did actually want to address that, but I appreciate that you're working on that. And yes, we appreciate the new asphalt. It's very nice, but I do worry when the weather changes because it's already, I typically don't leave my house in a vehicle when the roads are bad on G Street because it's so dangerous at the bottom of the hill. And with that slide that happened, however many years ago that was now, it did carve that in. And at least before, we had some small trees and maples and different things that would stop a vehicle if it did go over the edge. It's still, it's, I mean, I've lived there for what, 22 years and that's been a concern of mine since I've lived there. And it's going to be worse this year. So hopefully we get that rolling and that will make us feel a little bit safer coming off the hill. The only other thing that I wanted to address, and I'm sure you're really sick and tired of hearing about, is the camp that's behind our house. And so the house has been pretty quiet up there this summer. It hasn't been vacant the whole time. And about a week ago, we did have an officer that, I just happened to catch him at the bottom of the hill and I wanted to talk to him about something else, but I stopped to talk to him because he was parked down below and he'd gone up to the camp and he was on his way back down. And I did know that there were people back up there, including the property owner. And to my understanding from talking to the officer, and the officer isn't here tonight, but. here tonight, but, um, so talking to that officer, um, Mr. Wagner was, was giving us a warning. And all I wanna say to that is that we've had a lengthy discussion about this. Um, Scott Laird put together a pretty, uh, good article last spring, or whenever that was, about what's been going on up there. And I guess I just don't understand, or really appreciate, why we're still giving warnings. He knows what he can and can't be doing, and so I'm just asking you to please follow up on this, we're tired of this, you're tired of seeing me, you're tired of listening to me. Um, I don't wanna come down here and talk to you about this, but I want, um, some of these issues to get rectified. Um, I've always been told, one of the main things that we are to report if we see is if he drives up that hill, that it's not a street, and that's what he did, and he was up there, and he's been up there back and forth, and that was just a warning. So I just wanna say that, put that out there, and hope that in some time in my lifetime, this changes, cuz we don't like it.
And I have one thing to add, just to kind of help. You guys did go up on Block Street, you quit signing on it, and they come up and they just kind of move short, right, take over, and just run out of the ramp. Now, earlier this year with Jeff Burge, probably Works Director, we had some taken down, and I told him at that time, and I think I spoke to you, I wouldn't be able to get them all cut up into firewood in the amount of time, so I've been working on it as I could. And so there's still those rounds of wood laying in behind the barrier, and when I go up, I'll put, and I told Jeff what I'd be doing, I'd push the barrier around so I could get around to him and work on it, and then I'd push it back. These guys are just shoving it out of the way, ignoring the sign going on up the hill. So, just so you know.
Okay.
Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Amy.
If I could, I didn't actually expect to speak tonight except to support the letter, but I see you have the FEMA bio, biological opinion in your work session, and I'd love to give you just a tiny bit of background. Um, this biological opinion was based on a lawsuit, um, um, near its national jurisdictions and FEMA laws, and they were then forced to mitigate, and that's the best term I could say. When this started, this has been, we actually got a three-year path because of, uh, a legislator that did shut it for three years. Uh, he's no longer available. We, we formed a coalition, a whiteout coalition, and thirty counties are involved, Association of Counties, they've ordered cities, they're all involved in this court. I'm on the coalition, because this is near and dear to me. This has already happened in the state of Washington in its past, and they met, they met their mitigation. But what is being proposed with these three choices, this choice between disaster, disaster, disaster for cities and counties, it's untenable. We actually filed a lawsuit two years ago, and it was thrown out because the judge says you don't have standing, because it's only a concept, not an harm. I am by no means trying to influence your opinion and what you're gonna do tonight, because you don't have a choice. They put you under a gun, you either do one of these three things, or you lose flood insurance, which means every one of us is out of compliance at the bank, and we're all with our names. It's, it's very dire what happened. Now, frankly, we had another six months to come up with a man or a mitigation option, and we were working on that. FEMA dropped the ball, or dropped the gun about sixty days ago with the letter, says, first of all, we're suspending all MAP amendments, which means that anybody that was in the middle of trying to get out of the floodplain is done. They stopped all MAP amendments indefinitely, and they came up with this, what I would call mandate that's untenable. It's disastrous, not only for this county, but for thirty out of thirty-one out of thirty-six counties in the state, not the least of which is Tillamook County. And they're completely out of the result of this. So we're waiting for councils like yours, just so you know, to be harmed by passing this. And when you do, we've already had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside, we're looking at another hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year, for attorneys, which we've already hired, who filed a lawsuit. Ultimately, what we're gonna have to do is go after the biological opinion. Now, the thing that bothers me the most is the state of Washington went through this very same thing. They do not have this draconian choice. They have a much better avenue, and FEMA had the opportunity to do that with state of Oregon too, and they did not. And this is inexcusable, as far as I'm concerned, and I will stay on this issue as long as it takes, cuz this spells disaster for any kind of road in this county, and this county in particular, this county, Tillamook County, Platte County, it's bad. I mean, this is probably the worst thing that's happened in land use in fifty years in this state. So anyway, I just wanted to give you background, and I'm not trying to influence your opinion, you have no choice. So we're just waiting for some injuries, which would be the path of this, and then we can show the brand, and actually have standing in the court to file this lawsuit. So we will be filing a lawsuit, just so you know. And we also ask the question, historically, what happens when a county or a city, or even all collectively, a state says, we're not gonna do that? FEMA, this has happened before in other states, and FEMA drag through, takes them about two to five years before they find you actually out of compliance and drop the hammer. So we've got some time, but I, I, again, I don't think you have a choice here tonight. We're gonna have to do one of these because they've already managed it. And I can show you the letter that they draw, astounding to the whole coalition. So that's just the background I wanted to give you on this.
Thank you very much, Tony, glad to hear that. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I move to city council, we have an agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Webb. Thanks, Tony, good night.
Counselor Ash, hi, I'm Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, unfinished business, staff report, twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, priority list adoption.
So I won't go through the whole list, uh, but on your work, or on the staff report, where is the suggested motion?
I move that we formally adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five city council project priority list as per voting.
So moved, is there a second? I'll second, seconded by Counselor Webb.
Mayor Hoberg.
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor Carey.
Stephanie, where the priorities pretty similar in, in priority, pretty much.
Some.
Okay, new business staff report, final three work session, page five.
Another one for me, before you, you have, uh, some dates, X's are O's, and preferred uh, dates are the October twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, or thirtieth.
I can't do the twenty-eighth.
I would be out of state.
Out of state.
A week, but I could probably attend.
Would the first week in November work better for you?
There's only two days, the fifth and sixth.
Yeah.
Available. I, they work for me, I don't know if anybody else.
Well, if everyone else is available in the, in last week in October, and she could be virtual.
Yeah, I can do that.
Like the twenty-ninth or thirtieth?
Could you do that, Sheree? Twenty-ninth? I could do the thirtieth.
You just asked her if she could do the twenty-ninth and.
Oh, I'm.
Can you do the twenty-ninth?
Well.
Oh, no.
Either.
Oh, you could do either.
I can do either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-ninth at six-thirty?
Donald.
Donald?
Yeah.
That's a Tuesday, twenty-ninth. Staff report, FEMA required flood management.
Yes. All right, well, I'm not gonna say anything Tony said about how horrible this is for the community. This is very complicated as far as what's happening. I probably should have sent links, there's actually a FEMA page with tons of documentation and stuff, and tomorrow I will, uh, send a group email out to, uh, council if you're interested in looking at what's going on and documentation. Unfortunately, basically, as Tony said, the federal government got sued, and they're using the community, cities and counties' ability to get, to maintain flood insurance, essentially forcing the city to enforce federal law. That's, it's that plain and simple. It's no different than the, you know, whatever, Social Security Administration showing up and saying, all right, city of Vernonia, it's your job doing, uh, to administer social security benefits and within the city of Vernonia. So we do have to pick an option by the end of the year, um, and that's what we've put before you. The first one, just outright doing, prohibiting all, um, development in the floodplain, um, incorporating this language, which into our flood hazard ordinance, which would allow us to continue to develop, but just cause a lot of work for us and a lot more headache for developers, but it's still possible. And then the third one is a habitat assessment program, um, which, on the surface, I, I like. The problem is that we, we have to come up with our own system of evaluating it. Something similar, the state of Oregon says, this is how wetlands work. You pass, the city of ord, the city of Vernonia passes this wetland ordinance, which is in our title line with chapter seven or eight, whatever it is. But then they have a central body at the state that reviews wetland delineations and manages mitigation and stuff. This, but this, they're saying, oh, here, you developed this entire environmental system at the city level. Well, the city of Vernonia can't establish it unless we come up with a bunch of money and hire some biologists and yada, yada, yada. So it, it just isn't feasible. So what staff really needs, and what we're recommending, is that council, I don't know what it.
A motion or consensus.
The consensus that we pick option two, so that we can kind of start to move forward. Um, there's gonna be a lot happening, there's probably gonna be workshops in the new year, um, talking about it more. So that's kind of what we're looking at tonight, no one to.
Can I interrupt you for one second? So Ben, we've been working towards this middle option. We have to start, there's enough work to be done that we have to start working towards an option, and we were like, wait a sec, we gotta get council, we don't wanna work towards an option and council say, no, we would have rather you halt all development, or we would have rather you done this, so that's why we're here. Our intent is to modify our code and go with the middle option, cuz it seems the most keep us still alive in development world, um, and just keep working. The governor has sent a letter saying she's gonna push back, so potentially, we're gonna keep doing the work in the hopes that it gets amended. Really, this regulation comes into final effect in twenty twenty-seven. So they're making us work on stuff that potentially will just, the hammer will come down, and those will be the rules in twenty twenty-seven for everyone. So we don't wanna be caught behind the ballgame, we wanna be ahead of it and tweaking our code in kind of a track changes version, so that when this needs to be adopted, we're there, we're ready.
And we do, and, so at the current time, it keeps changing. I actually had a phone call last Thursday with our FEMA representative, and they're already changing the goalposts on us. The governor is fighting this, you heard Tony, like, there's, there's gonna be a lot going on, but just basically, we just, if you, if you have any questions about the options, but we just, staff needs to know from council, this is the direction, at least we want you working and tracking as we continue to get these emails, and FEMA continues to.
Tweak it.
Tweak it, and there's, like I said, there's gonna be litigation, there's gonna be all sorts of stuff, we're just trying to stay on top of it. Um, and there, there will be more work, probably a work session and, or work sessions and other things happening in the new year, um, you know, surrounding, surrounding this, and we may or may not be making these changes, staff just needs some direction from council on if you think number two is the right way to move forward, so that we can kind of be prepared and tracking in that direction as things happen. Not a great option, but like Tony, we gotta pick one.
Other questions for Ben?
I think it makes the most sense, unfortunately, of all of them.
Yeah, I, I read through all three of them myself, and I agree with staff on option two.
Quick question, would this be the time that we would also propose looking at charging a fee for the floodplain development?
Well, I was gonna talk about that next, if, that was kind of a secondary thing that I'll just make, yeah, I was gonna talk about afterwards.
Would that be included in this?
No, this is, okay, this is kind of a, a separate thing, but it's somewhat related, but it was, Josette and I thought we would bring it up and, um.
Okay.
So it would be a motion to direct staff to move forward, option one, two, or three? And then you wanna talk about fees afterwards?
Yeah. Yeah, we're just, I'm gonna make a brief statement about it, we're not gonna be making any decisions about it tonight, I just wanna get.
Go ahead and get a general consensus on the re-apply motion.
I'll move to direct staff to move forward with option number two.
It's your second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Ash.
Counselor what?
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hoberg.
Hi.
Motion carried.
So we will, um, we'll just, as things happen, we'll be moving forward with that. I will, like I said, I will send an email out to everybody tomorrow with the FEMA page that has all of the documentation and information, so if you guys are interested in looking into it and following, they, all of the documents, um, come up, they've got a feed, um, is there's changes and stuff, if you have any questions. Personally, you're always, um, um, free to, to contact me, and, and I'll try to answer them. Okay, so on the, on the floodplain development permits, so the city got rid of fees after the flood, is just part of.
Moving in.
Moving it forward, yep, we're getting in compliance, this, that was something the city could do, people's houses were being razed, so we got rid of. So we got rid of, got rid of that.
Got my permits?
Floodplain development, the fee. Yeah, we got rid of fee and if it is zero. I don't actually think it's in the master fee schedule, but it was just kind of assumed that it was, that it was zero. Okay, we're past the flood. We're talking about new houses, that sort of thing. And then with potentially more work on staffs and depending on what comes out of these new regulations, we're already spending a lot of time. And so it's, it's good that the, that the city is, is looking out for the community floodplain development wise, but you know, no other engineering fees, building permits. We're, we're charging for them. And so we have some different kinds, like I stated in here, local business getting new HVAC. They do a floodplain development permit. It takes me 15 minutes to do the calculations, say you need to be this far off the floor to be flood safe. But like new houses take more and so it's just a question of council and it would probably come back with ideas closer to fee time next year, what, April, May? Josette and I did look, different cities have different approaches based percentages of the permit cost and some other ones. We didn't want to go too far into it. If council's happy to just go with the status quo and the community just continues to, you know, as a whole, pay for floodplain administration, that's fine. If council would like to see some options for charging fees, depending on the type of development and stuff, will, staff will bring some options next year, close to fee time.
I mean, to me, it's an extra cost that is being incurred by floodplain properties and yet everyone is currently paying for it. So I think it would make sense to bring up.
Yeah, I think something scalable.
Yeah.
Because our goal from the flood, 96 to 07 to now is compliance. We know that the whole community is on the hook to participate so that everybody that lives in the floodplain can use the FEMA's National Flood Insurance Policy because the other way would be cost prohibitive. And up to now, yeah, a new home, but we kind of saw that as, oh, new, more tax base. They're going to be paying taxes. They're going to be paying services. So it still didn't sting as much, right? When we had a big house that needed a lot of work. But eventually with the habitat studies, it's going to be like a fence permit in the floodplain is a 15 minuter or something, or an HVAC. And then there's going to be an hour. And so just compartmentalizing different types is how most of them do it. And it's just fees per.
And like a new house, I'm working with somebody with the new house getting right now, like them getting the permit in and then going through the requirements. Now I'm talking with the architect to make sure that all the foundation and venting and all that stuff is correct. So there is some kinds of, you know, a new, and it could even be if somebody was raising an existing house, maybe we just
We still are free.
It's still free because you're bringing in compliance. But with building a new house, like, you know, they're getting, having the community subsidize that isn't really in the total benefit. They're going to build that new house to, they have to build the new house to the flood standard. So there's, the community subsidizing that and, you know, right now, four hours of my time, six hours of my time. And if we do end up with these new requirements, it's going to be a day, day and a half of my time. So, you know.
Well, and the component we're missing here too is it's the city's, if we do that ordinance, it's our city obligation to monitor long term.
Yeah.
Are you going out and cutting some of your repairing trees? Because you can bet FEMA is going to come through here with an aerial and they're going to go, those were trees were here and now those trees aren't, see Vernonia? You're out of compliance. How come you didn't catch that?
Yeah, and I think some of those funds could be used to pay for the person doing it, but also then like an education campaign. Like, let's not lose everyone's flood insurance. If you want to cut down the ugly tree, give us a call, you know, kind of like get them in. And maybe some of that initially to get people is like, there's a reduced fee for that. When they want to cut a tree and do that thing, it's not the full vote that we would want to charge, but it's like, hey, you're willing to come in and communicate because that helps us with our monitoring, you know, and we kind of collaborate there. But yeah.
But the workload on our staff is to stay in compliance is going to probably double or triple.
And it has been, like I said, it's, it's, you know, start to finish, all said and done, from the permit coming in to me signing everything off and the paperwork going into the property file in there for a new home is probably close to eight hours of total, total work for a new home. Yeah, from, from start to finish. And there's final inspection. And unfortunately, now we have to fill out a whole bunch of extra FEMA paperwork unrelated to these new requirements. They've required new paperwork and stuff and reporting. So at any rate, I just, just an item. Yep, if you guys are, if you guys, we can just continue as we are, or if you guys would like to see some numbers at at master fee schedule time next year, we'll come up with some ideas and bring them to you at that point.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. You know, let's do something like a minor permit, major permit.
Right.
Kind of skip.
That's how most cities have it.
Do you just need a general consensus from council for that?
They're not actually deciding anything. Staff's just going to be bringing back options.
Thumbs up.
Yes, please.
Yep. Thank you, Ben.
And we'll get, yeah, we'll get some options to you guys next year.
Okay, business from the departments.
My cue. Yes. All right. So in your packet, you see the July, August, 2024 calls, calls for service. For some reason, I don't know why they're doing it two months instead of doing it every month like they used to. So I'm going to have to, when Donnell comes back from vacation, I'll have to schedule a meeting with her, find out why we can't get back on the monthly instead of the two months. But as you can see, calls for service, I mean, July 55, August was 254. So we're staying pretty consistent when it comes to that. In August, right after Jamboree, we, Jamboree, we participated with the fire department for national night out and that was up at the school and that was a pretty big, it was a good success. It was a success. Had lots of attendance there and stuff. And so kind of want to reach out to the fire department, thank them for letting us participate in that with them. Unfortunately, the intel picnic was canceled. However, due to the short notice, we were still given a donation for being willing to participate. So that was pretty nice of them. And then during the first week, first weeks of school, I made sure that the radar trailer was in the parking lot and we had lots of presence there. So pre-educate families and making sure that they slow down when they're dropping their kids off and stuff. I think there was only one incident where a lady was dropping off a kid and went into the bus lane instead of into the normal one. So let's see, on August 16th, myself, Officer Kendall and Officer Schultz participated in a rapid response training with the city of Portland. The tenant from the city of Scaphus reached out to the agencies in Columbia County. And it was us, Scaphus, and then I think there was what, two or three of the sheriff's office were the only ones that participated in it. It was kind of his brainchild to have a rapid response team in Columbia County, you know, for riots and out of control stuff. But we won't, that was, I think that training was like eight hours. Officer, I sent Officer Kendall to TASER training. So now he's our TASER certified TASER instructor. So you don't have to seek recertification with another agency. So another step to try to be self-contained. So and Officer Kendall and I participated in, so the chief of Columbia City in our chiefs meeting wanted to more inter-agency collaboration for like traffic stings and stuff like that. Traffic enforcement. So it was August 29th, which was a Thursday. We did it for four hours. Officer Kendall and I participated with two Columbia City via county sheriffs and ourselves. And we did between Scaphus and Deer Island. Between the six of us, we made 34 stops. 22 of them were verbal warnings and 12 citations were issued. So it was pretty productive for the four hours. There was lots of chatter on Facebook. Were you not, Scott?
Yes, there was.
Yeah, I seen it.
I picked up the phone, we called and found out what was going on. Got out there, explained where they were, why they were there.
And that, and that was fun. Officer Kendall and our time was funded by the ODOT grant. It didn't come out of my, didn't come out of the budget or anything like that. So, and I think that was a misconception there on most people's part. And then Amy left before I could answer her question regarding Mr. Wagner. So Officer Ratliff, he's kind of unfamiliar with Mr. Wagner and the situation. He was given a verbal warning not to drive down, back down. It was referred to code enforcement for a later citation. We have up to six months to issue a citation. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Lot of premise calls.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Was that a typo or?
No.
Okay.
My night shift guys are doing what they're, they need to be doing. Presence is, presence is everything.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant. Ordinance resolution, resolution 2024 dash 08 approving an IGA State of Oregon for E-Permit System and Services.
So I won't go into lengthy details. I'm confident that all of you read this entire document. This is just the contract that's used for the E-permitting. It was vetted by legal and he was finding that long story short, the city is required to go to E-permitting, some sort of electronic permitting system. It doesn't have to be this one. But the alternative is that we pay for a system. This one's free because we already paid for it in the permits that are issued for building permits and the 12% state surcharge or 4% of that surcharge. More than likely, everyone is going to be using E-permitting. On the citizen side, I played around a little bit. It's pretty easy to do this and to look up. The county uses it. Again, most other jurisdictions are using it. So this is just phase one before you guys, I've been working on this for a long time, to get the ball rolling so that January 1st, I'm hoping actually December, we'll be up and rolling with this. So I'll be coming back to you guys at different times over the next month or two to adopt different things for us to be online. Yeah.
Seems like another FEMA cramp down your throat.
The state.
It's great.
We are required. I think in the end, it will be good. It's not that they have to apply online, but they have the option to apply online. And the records perspective, at first I hated it because this system will keep it forever. Whereas the Secretary of State requires us to get rid of them after a certain amount of time. So, but as a citizen, and when you actually just look at it, it makes sense. They'll be able to look up all permits on their property forever once this starts. So the records part, I don't think it'll actually be an issue because I can just say, look it up on E-permitting. It's all on there. So their house plans will be able to be on there, the permit application reviews.
That's all permits of any type or only the E-permits?
These are building permits.
But I mean, whether they were filed in person as well, they'll be visible?
So it, it will end up being uploaded.
Okay.
My understanding.
Yeah.
I don't believe they're required to apply only online. At some point, it might be kind of nice to go down that route because again, retention, everything will be on there. At some point, we won't have to have physical copies.
Or maintain our.
It might actually kind of be nice. But again, it'll all, they'll be able to just look it up. So I can get on there right now and look up my property file. Any on there, but and see anything that's pulled. You can actually go onto the city of, or the county's website and look up and type in Vernonia, Oregon, and it'll pull up any permit within Vernonia County by address and what action it is. At some point, you know, phase one, at some point, I'd also like to see about doing planning, engineering of those kinds of permits on there also because again, they would have it all available to them online and be able to see everything for their property. So it might, it might be kind of nice. I think it'll be okay. At first I hated it. I think it's going to be a good thing in the end. So we're also going to be bringing forward an ordinance for building fees. I'm in the notification process with the state on that. I just finished audit with that, which was again, a lengthy process. And so I just did the 45 day notice. I'll be bringing that to you guys. I think it's the second meeting in November for adoption. We won't have will rule in it because it's already approved by the state, but it is right in line with everybody else. So it's actual cost. We cut everything that we felt was an unnecessary expense for the citizens. So we put our foot down. I tried to get rid of some things that the state then said it's required. Back then, but I think, I think it'll be good. It's lots of transparency. So it'll be nice.
Okay, moving forward. Any other discussion on this or question? I can make a motion? Yeah, I'll move, we adopt resolution number 2024 dash 08, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Building Codes Division for E-Permit System and Services.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Nay.
Counselor what?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ordinance number 946, an ordinance providing a water leak procedure.
Forty-five for those who are
digging for them.
Continuing to dig for it.
Forty-five? What are you talking about?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Oh, forty-two.
So so this is, there's a couple of things in here. The water consumption, utility accounted, adjustment for water consumption is identical to what the current ordinance says. It's fewer words and it's kind of bulleted, pointed. It's easier for the public and staff to understand. There's a couple of other things, responsibility, who's responsible for what? As far as up to the meter. And then the other part is repairing leaks in a timely fashion. So current in 895, it basically says, no water user shall wastefully knowingly waste water, which is essentially letting a leak continue. But there's no ramifications for it. It's like, you shall not do this, but for it. It's like, you shall not do this, but we're not, we don't have any teeth to do anything. And so basically, it's from 31 days. And at that point, you know, we're gonna go and cut the valve off. So you stop leaking until you can get it fixed. So those are just clarifying some points to help give staff teeth and know who's responsible for what. And then the other issue would be in section six, which is the sewer consumption. Going into details, we've kind of had some issues with this with, with a couple of accounts and there wasn't really a clear policy. So basically, you know you had a leak during November to February. And so if, if you had the leak, then we can adjust your sewer consumption for the next year as long as you request it. If anybody has any questions about the to do, April 20th date, that gives somebody one month. So if their sewer consumption or their winter average gets calculated, they, they already knew they had a leak and fixed it, but it gives them one extra month. If they see that $50 or, well, the one leak, $126 extra charge, it gives them one extra month to contact the city. It'd be like, I want you to take the previous year's consumption or residential monthly average, whichever is to is higher. So it should, we should never have any issues with these sewer consumption issues again with this. So.
Like, trying to move forward.
Yeah. Well, we had an example where we had someone leak in the winter. They knew, they fixed, they didn't fix it immediately, so it continued. And then even after it got recalculated and they were getting that huge charge, they didn't come in, didn't come in, didn't come in. And then they came in and said, you charged me wrong. And we're like, no. But we had no policy.
Right.
To backtrack it, you know, to not backtrack it. And so legal was like, no, just pay him out and develop a policy because it's not worth it. Let's just, this will be our one learning curve. But we have had people in the past that have known lakes, continue to pay the high water bill, continue to pay, just like we still have people that pay $50 extra a month because they just want to park on their meter. Okay. Pays the covers, our guy going and rereading it because the meter reader couldn't get to it. So, but they're going to pay an extra 600 bucks a year just to keep their vehicle where it's parked. Okay. So this is the policy that will solve it and will never have to have that return of money to anybody that chooses not to fix the leak.
And then we will be, also the teeth actually shut people off after 30.
Thirty-one days.
Days. And, and that's not to say, I mean, with anything like this, if, you know, somebody's
Like my contractor's coming on Saturday. We're not gonna.
Issues or whatever, or working, the city will work with it. But, you know, we, we did have somebody who literally leaked 150,000 gallons a month into the ground for like eight months straight. And.
They just paid the $450 extra charge.
So now, yeah, after whatever, 31 days or the next billing cycle and it's still there, no, we're shutting and locking your water meter.
Until you fix it.
Until you fix it.
Well, it protects us.
Yeah. Well, it costs money to make it. And if you're just pouring it down the drain or into the rock, no thanks.
Yep. Especially during, I mean, summer months when we're on curtailment and stuff, it's even.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 946, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia providing for a water leak procedure, adjusting utility accounts in the event of a leak, repealing ordinance number 915, and repealing portions of ordinance number 895.
So moved.
I second.
Second by Counselor Norman.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Oh, hold on, do you have the whole ordinance thing? Would any counselor wish to have this ordinance read and full? Hearing no real request, this is the first reading of ordinance number 946 as read by title only, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia providing for a leak, water leak procedure, adjusting utility accounts in the event of a leak, repealing ordinance number 915, and repealing portions of ordinance number 895. If you wanted, since it was unanimous, you could do the second motion and reading.
I will move that we pass ordinance number 946, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia providing for a water leak procedure, adjusting utility accounts in the event of a leak, repealing ordinance number 915, and repealing portions of ordinance number 895.
So moved. Thank you, Counselor Ash.
Tuck it.
Second by Counselor Norman.
Sorry, also tipped me. Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Motion carried. Would any counselor wish to hear this ordinance read and full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 946 by title only, ordinance of the City of Vernonia providing for a water leak procedure, adjusting utility accounts in the event of a leak, repealing ordinance number 915, and repealing portions of ordinance number 895. This will be in effect within 30 days.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, correspondence, city county dinner invitation, page 45.
We got, we got an email today.
It's a reminder. Yeah. So this got emailed to you guys. There was also an email reminder today, and I'm bringing it forward to you today, that tomorrow is your deadline to RSVP to Susan Reeves, or let me know, and I will let her know if you're gonna go.
I will go.
I'm going.
I'm going.
You're all gonna go?
I'll go.
Is there any?
Well, you know, if the wife.
Wait, what?
They're gonna think.
That's, it's been years.
I know.
I'm excited.
That's a kill buck waiting to die.
And you owe the city $27.
I'll have a guest.
You can eat.
Will anybody else have a guest? A plus one?
Not on the know of.
Be sure to bring up these new FEMA rules and commiserate with your.
Yeah.
Cohorts on this and voice your concerns and.
I would like to talk about the levy.
I'm sure it'll come up.
That'd be almost too late.
Okay. City administrator report.
Okay. So the ODFW docks, Topper Industries has completed docks in their yard waiting for us. Mark and Marine Construction is still working to get us into their schedule. We've had back and forth emails about what's it coming in on? What's the weight of it? Da-da-da, blah, blah, blah. We're gonna anchor capabilities. So we're going back and forth because she's trying to price out what she's going to charge us. She had a whole bunch of bullet points, a whole bunch we're not going to need. We don't need her to remove or dispose of the old docks. We don't need transportation from Topper Industries of the docks to here. So there's, the price is getting smaller and smaller, which is good, good for us. So I'll update council once I have the date when they're going to get delivered because you might want to be there. You might want to see it happen. I don't know. The ODOT ADA project. So we paid our, we're working to pay our deposit. Remember that we didn't want our Public Works held hostage for the entirety of the ramps project. So we decided to use Public Works funds to pay whatever the bids came back for the conflicts. So that's going to be manhole lids, clean out lids. We have one light post that needs to move. And I'm like, that just seems like a project in itself because you need an electrician, you need this, you need that. And so we went the way of getting their estimate for the conflict cost. And they require that be paid to them by October 11th. So that are the next, so they're in Rainier, we're the next town after Rainier. They're still looking at March is their, still their game plan. I sit in when I can on the weekly meetings to kind of keep track of where they're at. But everything seems to be going good. I don't know if I mentioned this, but we will be using the lot where the grindings are for the small concrete batch plant where they're going to make the ramp concrete on site. So we've been working with the contractor to stage there like all the contractors love to do right in the middle of town. So I'll keep you guys updated as that stuff comes down. The SCA projects for this year are complete. Staffs documenting issues. We've had a few calls from someone on Alder. There's a, there's a culvert that's got a dip on Elm. I have a couple dips that now we can cold patch. And then there's somebody called on Ivy or one of the others. So we're keeping track of that and work orders have been put in. And then Public Works is going to go cold patch the areas that either have sunken because there's something, they're over something, or it's a weird pothole that settled after they put rock in it. But we'll just keep addressing those as they come. Louisiana North-South Connection is moving along. They're installing the water main piping and doing the cut and fill of the road base. I believe that there was a couple, they've hit a couple, they've hit a couple things. So Public Works has been up there when they run into something. And then we did, they're putting a couple new fire hydrants on Louisiana because those weren't kind of in our brain to get installed when we're doing that. But Jeff's like, buy another one, buy another one. Like, get those suckers in if we can have someone do it. So that project's going well. I'm still waiting for the response to the amendment that we, the legal, that our legal kind of tweaked the back and forth between us and the union. They wrote a new paragraph. We're waiting for the union's response on that. And that's related to staffing levels and whether or not officers lose their vacation or we're allowing them to be paid out. If we cannot allow them to take their vacation, we're in the contract allowing them to take the hours that they would lose and be paid out for those. So they don't start the year, year out of compliance and they don't work for us so hard that they can't take a vacation and then we steal those hours. So we're still working on that. The springboard project, so as you know, the grinding and paving of Adams is complete. The contractor skipped Hawkins, so Salmon Festival wouldn't be affected. And they went Weller, Dennis Weller up to E. They're on E now. They are going to have to cut in about a foot of the new asphalt. They will have to be restoring it. The contractor that put it in with his half street improvement was like, I just saw a chalk line and they're gonna cut a foot of my asphalt. And I'm like, the pipe needs to go in the center of the road. So we're working on that. They're going to come around E and then they'll be coming back to Shea and Park Drive and doing the boring. There's been kind of back and forth. On Thursday of last week, we were boring from Hawke, or from Shea to Hawkins. And now the grinding company is saying maybe they want to come from Hawkins back to Shea. So we're just waiting to see what happens. And we will, if we go Shea to Hawkins, we're gonna have to ask our E bike guy to relocate because with moving the jail and the tractor and like a 38 foot pit by 12 feet by, it's just going to be a mess for him. So he may be relocated for the last month. October is his last month of reservations. The upcoming DEQ permit, we did, since I wrote this, we did receive our draft response. Public Works staffs reviewing it. They did do a scalable discharge for during the summer months. So when we have the heavy rains, based on the river level, we will be allowed to discharge more than the 200,000 gallons that is our summer allowed. They also kept in the hyper heat zone with some more monitoring, but we could be more easily allowed to use that using our monitoring wells.
Yeah.
They did a stall of compliance for the ammonia treatment, giving us two years to put aeration in one to not be violated and fined when our ammonia peaks over that, I think it's 10 in the new permit. So they're looking at it. Once they look at it and kind of give me their synopsis of it, then I'm going to send it to you guys with their kind of breakdown of how they see it as staff that have to meet that criteria. And I think we kind of luckily got a lot of what we asked for in this first round. Like, hey, you're gonna just put us in violation all the time and this community can't afford it. So that's.
So Joseph, do you think we'll be able to get permitted then?
Yeah. So it looks like Chris and Jeff's on vacation right now. So Chris is the one that's, I've been back and forth with. And he was like feeling pretty good. He's gonna have Ben make a spreadsheet. I don't know if he asked.
We actually did that. So they actually have a detailed spreadsheet and for cubic feet per second of the river, which tells them exactly how many million gallons to the gallon per day they can discharge.
Because Chris wanted that so he could plug in what reality is and have it spit out what he can do using the formulas that are in the permit. So I think we're looking up on the DEQ front. Oh, go ahead and talk about it.
Oh, the lead service line inventory required by the state this year. Submitted today, Public Works. Guys went out, collected all the data we needed. And so we are submitted.
It looks like if they wanted 25, 20 or 20?
20. Well, it started out as 33%, and then they dropped it down to 20%. And so we're at like 20, we had like 21% done.
Yeah.
So.
So they, basically the state's requiring cities to go and check every service and document what the pipe is coming into the meter material and what the pipe is going into the house, looking for lead. We don't have any. But so we, I think a lot, they started with the huge number. And I think a lot of cities were like, are you nuts? We're never going to get that. Luckily for us, we have a lot of that stuff in plans and documented just in subdivision plans. Or like I told Chris, I'm like, my street, you can see every, both pipes on my street. So go get my eight houses and go. So the first round's going to be the easy stuff. Hopefully they're going to get to the second round and see, we don't really have a lot of problem in Oregon. So maybe this is overkill. So, but Chris was on it and.
Yeah, fingers crossed. Yes, the end. Hopefully this is the end of it. Because the original plan, I think it was like a five or six year plan to document all 100%. And like the first was like 33%. But I, I, I'm confident that when they get the results from the State of Oregon and, because the Oregon Health Authority is the one that is administering this under the direction of the, I believe the UK is doing it. So I'm, I'm kind of hopeful that they're going to see these jurisdictions in Oregon, there's no lead. Evidence is lead has never been used west of the Rockies for any water service anywhere. And this will be the end of it. But the guy, the guys, I, I want to commend.
Yeah.
Public Works. Because we, I set up the project. I was a little concerned about how quickly and effectively it was going to get done. And they really went out and attacked it. And we got it. We got it in. So.
We also had the interview for the Park Coast position. We had two applicants, Jason Wheelock from the Parks Committee and Brittany Tigert, who is a current, our current Park Coast to Anderson, and myself were the panel. We did sign an agreement with David Sterner and Richard Traver. And then kept the other gentleman's name. Should we have like someone at airport leave? He didn't seem like the right candidate maybe for as busy as the lake is. Just someone that has to be in the public, talking to them, answering questions during that. So, and he felt the same way. He was like, that's a, that's a lot, you know, going through it. So they're down there now. The Conex did get the first coat before the rain, but Mitch was so heartbroken. was so heartbroken that somehow it didn't, some of it didn't dry, and he sees like drip marks and he's just, he's like, oh man, but he sells another coat to do. And yeah, that's what I have for you guys, unless you have questions for me.
Yeah.
So we discussed before the parking lot next to the mini mart, that they wanna pave that, is, is that, looked like that?
He's still debating on what he's gonna need to do, because I said, well, I don't know that I can let you because it's the floodplain, and so I don't know what he'll end up doing, if he's gonna pave it and peel it, or if he's just gonna put down like a layer of media that he'll scrape up and take with him, but I said, we'd love new gravel engraved and no potholes, you know, if that's how you wanna leave it for us.
Yeah, okay, I just, that, probably because of the impervious surface is why we can't, because you've mentioned that we have credit for.
Yeah, we have it, and so we could probably fight for that if, if he does really wanna do it, because doing, especially depending on the timing, if he does it, if it happens before the end of the year, then that would be a different story.
Yeah, I mean, because that would be quite the asset for the community if that was paved.
Yeah.
And if we're headed into the zone of where we're not gonna be able to pave any of these impervious surfaces in the future, either now or never.
And that's kind of one of those, I mean, those are buyout lots, and so, but it, it's essentially part of the park is, you know, excess parking, and so that's, I, you know, if it.
Oh, you got your bag.
I would know the red, the red bic is for you.
Thank you.
So, you know, if it, if it ends up paved, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not someone, I'm not telling them. Fighting for if, if, if they're willing to pave it, because he seemed like he wanted to pave.
He liked it for the containment of whatever, yeah, yeah.
So we.
No, I'm still in just.
Some arms there, I think that might be.
Right.
The Louisiana North-South Connection, so I mentioned to you before, and I don't know, it's, I mean, this is an engineer question on where Brett Costley lives, the steepness of the bank, and I don't know how much we're cutting and stuff, but there's a concern about creating an unstable situation there, as steep as it is.
I'll add that to Robert's G Street.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think actually Robert.
Yeah, he took, yeah.
He's actually looked at that or has been looking and watching it, so it isn't being, okay, great, it isn't being ignored by Robert.
Yeah, if we see anything going on, we'll deal with that.
Okay, any other questions for?
Oh, I have one more thing, so we have currently three applications, two that are qualified to be interviewed for a public works position, we'll probably wait till the end of the week, make sure we don't have any others, and then schedule those, and I have, who, is somebody from you guys on there? I think I only got names for, I don't think normally you are, so I only got names for the panel. So usually it's public works, someone from City Hall, a community member, and I think it'll be great. We have a couple applicants that I think could do the job, so hopefully they interview okay, and one of them stands out.
On the springboard, they're gonna bore underneath ridge?
Yes, yeah.
So they're not gonna dig it up?
No.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I had two smaller things I didn't think warranted being in the big report, but they are wondering if a no dumping sign could be put in at Aura, I think it was talked about, but hadn't opened.
Oh, along the road?
Dumping.
Yeah, I sent the letter.
Yeah, along the upper, right, because isn't the concern that?
The concern we were having was people dumping their brad, branches on the planted tree area, and I sent them all letters saying, this may have been a practice in the past, but we're not into it anymore, but I can put a sign.
Yeah.
Add a sign.
They want a sign, if possible.
For the park, yeah.
And then.
This is Veronia Parks, no dumping, or some, I'll make it so it's not just no dumping, okay.
Yeah, they are, not all of them, some of them are very hung up on the look of it as it's growing back in, and there was a question about could the entire thing be weed eat, heated?
Well, I'm trying not to weed eat it because I'm trying to let the natural things grow and die and seed and grow and die and seed, because once the canopy gets up past them, we'll want that. We talked about weed eating it in the past, but it was gonna be just like a side hustle, go do it as citizens team party, deal the webs, the Mitchells, and whoever else came with a weed whacker.
Log on it.
Yeah, he'd be, he'd be really thorough. So the other thing is, is, yeah, we just, I mean, is it 50/50 or is that the perks?
Then they were asking would the watershed do it, and I was like, well, it's not in the waterway, it's not riparian.
Yeah.
And they probably would be in favor of it being natural.
Right, well, and I'm, I have the seeds for the golden rod and all the things, but they have to be now is when I cold harden them and plant them, so they can take off, so.
And that's going in there too?
Yeah.
Okay.
The seeds that are getting cold hardened for 60 days in the fridge right now, off, and then we're gonna kinda go plant them.
Well, all that, I mean, especially that front end, like, you know, and I don't know, that was Calhoun's or somebody.
That's Calhoun.
And we should make sure we keep that up, but.
Yeah.
What's that?
Mitch has done it a couple times.
Okay, so, good, good.
Was it the rod and looping, sorry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I think this coming year, you'll start seeing quite a bit of difference, those, those trees are just getting where they're gonna get above the grass, so it's gonna start turning green, the ash trees, now we've got the deer off of them, hopefully they're gonna let them out, or get a little more vigorous this next year, so.
And then I do have a line on some vine maple to plant in there too.
And I've got seeds that I'm.
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Or whatever they call it.
Taking it natural, we're just, it's taking a while, it's not, it's a little shallow.
But, yeah.
I do got one, Rick.
Go ahead.
Public Works position, we have somebody quitting, retiring.
I'm sorry, Wayne gave us his notice and went back to the, back to working with the state and youth. We were kinda bummed because he was really starting to get a handle on being our tester, so doing, running lab, and we're like, now, what? But it was just more his thing. So he did give us, I think he gave us three weeks of, you know, long notice, like, sorry guys, but I really need to go back to this career, yeah. So we have Chris, Jeff, and Jonathan, and then we'll have someone in the next position. And it's been posted on the reader board and then on the website, and we've just kinda, we put open until filled, so we could get a number of good candidates, give people time to realize we're hiring, and it says, we're hiring, join us, or something, and then, yeah.
Well, it didn't really say Public Works or.
Yeah, well, it was, it was Parks and Public, the park hosts and the Public Works that went on the website at the same time, so it was kind of to get any application in, but I could change, I could tweak it in tomorrow morning.
On the board downtown.
Yeah, no, but I could tweak that and say, you know, utility worker one or something, and maybe for the last four days of this week, maybe someone sees it and.
Yes.
Fun in.
If you have no clue, it says, come join us, well.
I know, they just gotta, they, it could be anything.
Yeah.
Could be a librarian.
Posted it on our website.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple weeks.
But it doesn't draw them there if they are that worker, yeah, I get it, yeah.
Think Councilor Norman's gonna apply.
Maybe.
He just needs to see it on the big board.
Oh, thank you, Joseph. Looks like we have a work session next Monday. Remind me what that is on.
Yeah, that's the quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
It's good, it's project updates.
Okay.
Right, so we're just gonna do a work session, go through, get it, input from you guys.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
So just to add on to the G Street discussion about sliding down it, I've been there, done it, didn't go over the bank, like, I did a full 360 down that hill one.
Ooh, yeah, it's.
A big red Ford.
Nervracking, but it's kind of a conundrum, because the way it's carved, we're gonna, like, I'm like, I have no idea, Robert, help me with the engineering of how we're gonna keep someone up there if they.
Well, and the, the other, the other problem is you've got the edge of the asphalt and then a little bit of the shoulder, and then it starts to do the swoop.
Yeah.
Where it sloughed away, the water line's right there.
Oh, yeah.
So, right, so like, you know, taking and like driving deep pilings or like longer, like six-foot pilings, and then putting a railing is, could be problematic with the water.
Yeah, we have to build behind and like do that.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's not a, it's not a simple fix, unfortunately.
Big curb.
Four layers.
Yeah, that might be a solution.
Right, but then they just bump and go.
Maybe.
Hey.
Action items?
Any counselors have any additional comments?
I do, real quick, Salmon Festival was amazing.
Good.
The 47, I thought that was kind of an appropriate number. That was, it was really remarkable, and the turnout was, was really fabulous, and kudos to.
The watershed, yeah.
They did great.
Yeah.
Okay, action item summary.
Okay, staff's gonna deliver the update report on the smoking signs to the Parks Committee, hopefully at the end of October, and to council the first meeting in November. We're going to also give council and the Parks Committee the data about going with stadium versus the park campground, so that council can make that decision. Staff will continue to work on the guardrail on State at G. Staff will schedule the October 29th, 6:30 work session for Title III Code Enforcement Community Wide Session. Staff will bring back the new fee options for floodplain development permit after the new year to address greater workload due to greater floodplain, and then the no dumping sign at Aura Bullmire, that's what I have.
Okay, it was a long meeting tonight, got a lot done, but thank you for everyone's participation, all journalists meeting at 9:15 PM, meeting adjourned.